At this time we have the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Jackie Greider, the latest in practice. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Greider.
Father, we come to you again today on this beautiful day that you gave us. We just thank you and praise you for each moment and each day. Thank you for allowing us to wake up and be able to come and be able to be a part of just another day. We just thank you for that. We mostly thank you just for the mercy that you give us and how loving that is for us. Because even though we fail you lots of times, we just want to know that we're still attached to you. We still hear that, have that relationship, we still can hear that whisper, you know, "I'm here for you." My Lord has said, we go through this meeting tonight, we just thank you for each one of you to come and come out. We just want to make sure that you're still in charge of this thing and that you give us the wisdom and knowledge to be able to make decisions and things that will benefit our community, our students, our staff, our employees, and each and every one, that has a role in this thing, Lord. We just thank you for, again, for allowing us the opportunity to be a part of that. Without you, we can't make any choices or anything. We just want to give you the praise for each and everything, for more than one. We just thank you again and go with us through this night and as we go along and give us our travel, say what you give. And give us another day tomorrow and be able to go and wake up and be able to not only just serve each other, but just to serve you and make you a blessing for you as we go through. Thank you, Lord, for that. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Greider.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Roll call. This action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entering present. Mr. Murray.
Present.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Ms. Higginbotham.
Present.
Mr. Kazoo.
Present.
And Ms. Whipper.
Present.
All board members present.
Adoption of the agenda.
Ms. Whipper, I don't have anything to add or to take away from the agenda. If there are no corrections or amendments, I recommend that the agenda be approved and presented.
I make the motion to approve the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo.
Yes.
And Ms. Whipper.
Yes. Okay, we have public comments. Anyone have anything they want to say before we get started? Okay, we'll go on. Russell County Education Association Certified Employee Recognition.
I'm here tonight to honor our Teacher of the Month and Teacher of the Month is Samantha Dyson. She teaches at Gentown, head for the third grade. Her subjects are writing, grammar, social studies, and science. It just pretty much covers everything in my head.
Yeah.
She taught 13 years. She taught kindergarten and preschool. She has a bachelor's degree. She has a certificate from Oregon for early childhood education. She has her masters in reading and writing from college to university. And what does she like best about teaching? Teaching is a calling that has truly blessed my life. It's such a privilege to share the joy in front of wonderful high students each day. Being able to watch them grow, experience, and become more confident in their learning, friendships is so rewarding. She likes to spend time with her sweet family, spend time with her family. She loves to read,看书, read, arts and crafts, and creating experiences for her students. And her favorite quote is one from Churchill, "A positive thinker sees the invisible, ill-see the tangible, and achieves the impossible." She comes from a long line of people that's worked in education here, not just teachers, but if you knew her sweet grandmother. When we were in public schools, she took care of all of these problems on her own. And she's the best of all of her family that has worked in education, so I'm very proud of her. Thank you.
Congratulations, Miss Megan. Was it 13 years? It doesn't seem possible.
I know.
Yeah, it goes by quick. Yeah, it goes by quick. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Did she want to say anything?
Ever anything.
Okay, Russell County High School ACT Action Plan.
We are so looking forward to having Mrs. Carter here. We've got a lot of high school folks here as well, and she's going to talk about ACT test scores. And they've been working very hard, her and her team, there at the high school, and got some good things that they're going to implement regarding the high school ACT. And, Miss Carter, the floor is all yours.
We got to number seven awfully quickly on the agenda. Still trying to take a little breath back there.
Yours is five. You always did great.
I brought my tech man, Mr. Holmes, with me.
Now, the last time you were here, you were on the screen.
Yes, I was on vacation.
Yes, you were. So you were on vacation.
And I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you all and tell you what's happening at the high school. Because we've got a hundred flowers. I've got a lot of flowers. Yeah, I've got flowers. We've got flowers. We're blossoming, how about that?
Oh, I like that idea.
We're blossoming. All right.
Was that intentional, or did you just come up with that on the cuff?
On the cuff.
Oh, okay.
I'm a winger. So I'm an English teacher, and I know you want an ACT Action Plan, but I can't just do a story in the middle or the end. I have to start at the beginning and then get to the end. So we kind of put this together. Let Holmes go ahead. I wanted to kind of talk a little bit first about our accountability, and I know that ACT is huge. It is what we know as educators to determine college success or scholarship money or anything like that. But the high school accountability is far more than just ACT. We have our KPREP, which, you know, this is the weights, reading and math, social studies, writing, science. We have English Learner. We have the Quality of School Climate Safety, which is a survey that students take, teachers take, and it covers everything from school safety, instruction, student well-being, all that. We have our post-secondary readiness, which is where ACT will fall, and then we have our graduation rate. So it's all put in together. So we have to work on a lot of things all at one time, and we're doing that. But I wanted to kind of put that up there first. To get post-secondary readiness, there's some things that go in there. First of all, you have to reach benchmark on a test, ACT. And then it says "or," it doesn't say "and," it says "or." Complete two KDE-approved dual-credit courses receiving a grade of C or higher in each course, or completing two advanced placement courses receiving a score of three or higher on each AP assessment. We offer dual-credit classes from Western, Campbellsville, Somerset, Lindsey. We've got a lot of our students who, our seniors especially, who are pretty much college students, while still enrolled here at the high school. So we're supplying them with dual-credit classes. We have AP classes, AP Lit, AP Sci. So they're getting it that way. And then you put a combination of all those together, ACT scores, dual credit, and you get the overall picture. For career readiness, that goes to our technical training. They score ad or above the benchmark on industry certification as approved by Kentucky Workforce on an annual basis. They can score ad or above benchmark on a career technical ed program. They can complete two KDE-approved career technical education dual-credit classes receiving a grade of C or higher, or they can complete a KDE-approved World Labor Cadet Apprenticeship. And again, I have to point out, it's not "and," but it's "or." So there are multiple options in order to be considered college career readiness. So ACT, let's take some background information. 2019, '20, we were not accounting. And we have it right here. We go back to 2018, 2019, going back, solid year. We still made some progress because we were hybrid, I guess, in, out, various ways. And here we are, and we've dropped because we were basically virtual. I think this is in-person and that's virtual.
There you go.
So we made some drops. I think we go to the next one, we go to the next one. There, you see the same, pretty much the numbers. Percentage meeting three or four benchmarks. We're still making the gains. And again, we have dropped. This is the greenest state, so we have dropped. And I'm not here to say that we have not dropped. All over the state, scores have dropped, and we're not happy about it. That's not where we want to be. But I have to say that I don't think it's as bleak as it was painted, or as it was pictured, or as we thought it would be, I should say. Is there room for improvement? Sure. Are we making steps to make that improvement? We sure are. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about that in just a minute. Don't know if you can see that back here. This is just a breakdown of average ACT scores by the year. If we look down here, these are.
We feel that the lights were off.
Part of it. Ms. Carol, Ms. Jo, yeah, that part of the window, Ms. Joy.
Flip those lights off.
Up here, you have the percentage of students who met benchmark.
Things up here, yeah. Oh, yeah.
In English, 42% of our students met benchmark. State was 43. In math, 21% of our students met benchmark, where the state only 19%. Reading, 27%, the state was 31. In science, we had 20% of our students where the state was 21. And then back all four goals, our school, 11%, and the state was at 12 for this year. Down here, we have the composite scores at the end. Russell County High School composite ACT, 17.5. The state was 18.1. Not a mathematician, but that's not a huge difference. And the state is down as well. I want to point that. The state's not happy where they are either. So what does that mean with neighboring counties? We're competitive. We're Lakers. We like to compete. So I wanted to put this out here for you to see. Plaske County's at 19. They're above the state. They went consistently, pretty much. They went through low numbers, COVID outbreaks, or whatever. Edcat, 17.8. Here we are, 17.5. If you can go, because it drops. Come on down. So again, we have places to go and things to do, but we're not at the bottom of the table. KPREP factors in, I'll throw a little bit of that in there. Our KPREP scores, we're above the state. Percentage of students' performance level. In reading, 10th grade. State is at 25.4. Proficient, we're at 28. Distinguished was 12.4 for the state, we're at 14. Mathematics proficient, 27.3. The state's at 24.4. Distinguished, we're a little below the state on there, but again, they're 5.8 and we're at 5%. And in science, 26.7 of our students were proficient, while 22.8% of the state was. And then 4.8 of our students were distinguished, I should say, and the state was at 3.7. So here we are, our Action Plan. It looks blank. It's really not. We are making a lot of ground, and we're going to quickly put a lot of things in play. First thing, we have map tested all of Russell County High School students. And I know this has been done in the elementary schools, and it's been done in the middle school for several years, but it's never been done at the high school. So every student has been map tested. And what that does is it shows the gaps. It shows where they're lacking for our students. It's a guide for our teachers to look at in each core subject and to see where the students are lacking. What do we need to work on? Our teachers have looked at the data. We've broken it down. And I want to tell you, they've taken ownership with it.
Good.
Our teachers have taken ownership. They have identified those students. And when I say identified students, I don't mean second-period math class. They've put scores to names. They've put, Ms. Joy Wilson, you know, she's great in every subject except maybe, you know, solving equations. Solving equations. Just, you know, she has problems with that. So, okay. Our teachers have gone so far as where they said, "Well, I know Ms. Joy Wilson. She's in my class, and we have a pretty good relationship. I'm going to get with her." So they're taking ownership, they're naming notes, and they're claiming their students. And I'm going to, I would tell you, I'd like to take credit for all that, but I can't take any credit for it because they jumped up. They jumped up when they saw the data, and they know that we're better than that. They know there are things to do, and they ran with it as far as departments goes. There are department goals that they're working on, they work during their lunch breaks to plan it. They're working after school. We've had meetings, individualized goals. And then I've had even the department, not the core content, and I'll just call it out. Bethany Garmin raises her hand. And we're having the meeting, and the math department, science, English, social studies, they were all going over what they needed to do to close this gap, or to do this, or to do that. And she stepped up, and she represents, you know, the ag and the marketing and the engineering and all that. And she said, "What can we do to help you all? What do we need to do in our classes that can help the core teachers?" Because really, we're all one unit. We're all the high school. We're not individual departments. We're all put together. So I was just like, "Yeah, okay." So we're working on getting that to them. So math testing was a big thing. We identified those gaps in the students. What does that have to do with ACT? Intentional instruction. Intentional instruction on where they're lacking. We're putting the focus there. They get the instruction, they learn, they get the concepts, they show it on the ACT. They produce it. So we've got that going on, and they're doing great. We have Ms. Christina Bunch, who is our intervention instructor, who is already working with individual students, and she's going into the classrooms to see exactly what they're doing in the classrooms so she can better help the students that she's pulling. She's pulling them out. She's doing KPREP and ACT work with them, as well as their regular classroom work to try to build up their abilities. We have Purchase Mastery Prep, which is a test prep program. It's going to give the testing strategies, practice tests, bell ringers, individual student booklets. There are virtual options for students to work on their own at home, or if they're in a computer lab, they can work on ACT practices. We have boot camps scheduled intentionally for our 11th graders when it gets closer to test time. And the boot camp's pretty intense. We've had those before. It takes place over here at the ANC. We got all the 11th graders in there, and it's an whole-day process, and the Mastery Prep people come and do it and run them through what they need to do. Mastery Prep, though, we plan to embed it in our regular classroom. It is embedded. They're already doing bell ringers in the morning for ACT. They're already breaking those down. We have what we call Flex Friday. And Flex Friday was a thing I kind of came up with, and I said, "I don't want any new instruction done on Friday." And there was a little bit of panic. "What do you mean, no instruction?" And I said, "I didn't say no instruction." I said, "No new instruction." This is the day for you to catch up on things they missed. This is the day for you to go back and reteach maybe something that you didn't cover as well as you did before, and you want to do it a little more. This is where the science department, if there's an experiment you wanted to do, but you didn't have time, do that experiment for extended learning. And that has taken off great guns because now we're into student-led instruction.
We've heard her.
I went by Ms. Kelly Kelsey's room the other day on Friday, and she said, "Okay, now we're going to redo a lab, and we're going to do both." And she was talking on and on, and, you know, again, I'm English, not science, so it was a little over my head. So I just said, "Well, that's good," and I walked on. And I said, "I really liked what you were doing." And she said, "Well, we did that lab on Wednesday, but the students said, well, it had something to do with copper pennies," and so. And the students said, "Well, what if we had done it this way?" "Well, I wonder if we had done it this way, could have gotten to the same conclusion." And she said, "I thought, well, let's do it again on Friday." So on Flex Friday, those kids were putting their hypothesis to use. And Ms. Kelsey said, "Some were disproven." I said, "Now, yeah, it worked." And she said, "Actually, I actually learned how to teach it next year a little differently from some things they did." So it's, you know, we've got plays being reenacted, math, you know, just things going on. Projects and student-created things that turned into more than what I thought. But we're also using it for ACT practice as well. They start off Flex Friday with ACT practice question. Then they can go into their units, they go into their reteaching, their retesting, whatever they're going to do. And again, all I did was throw out an idea. "What do y'all think about Flex Friday?" The teachers have, I mean, they're just, you know, they just run with it. They just go with it. So it's great. I encourage you, invite everybody to come check it out on Friday. Come any day at high school. Come any day, but on Friday, it's a special day. So in addition to Mastery Prep, we have tutoring that we're starting after school and in offering it in the mornings. ACT tutoring specifically will be Monday and Tuesday to work on skills and drills and practice and timing. Monday and Wednesday, math, social studies. Tuesday and Thursday, English and science. Transportation will be provided for the kids. We've got all these things that we're doing, and it's a lot, but I see it working already. I see the intentional instruction. And I have to say that if we did nothing at the high school, which we won't, but if we did nothing, I think being in person, we would see scores rise anyway. Because the teachers are working, the teachers are happy to be there, the kids are happy to be there. It's a, you see it when you talk to them in the hall, and they're just excited to be in school again. So we have all these in place, and I'm going to say that there's one thing we're missing, and that's our parents. There's some sort of a disconnect that happens when their student gets to the high school. Maybe it's because, as I said, they're six foot seven, 300 pounds. They're big kids now. Maybe parents, you know, maybe have not felt welcome to come into the high school, or maybe they're a little intimidated like I am, you know, with my science classes and my math classes. But in order for all of this to work, we need parents to help us push it. We need parents to have, to say, you know, "Get to school on time. Are you doing your homework? Do you have your assignments done? What about after-school tutoring? Are you going to tutoring? It's available today. Here's the schedule. I can pick you up. We can do this. Transportation's available." We need, we need that help. We need for parents, it's okay to be involved in your high schooler's life, and you shouldn't. And so I'm inviting you to come. I'm inviting you to come to the high school when you want to come, sit in on classes. If you ask us how to help, we're going to tell you how to help. We're going to give you a job. So to get to the end of the story, I can't tell you the end of the story. I can tell you that after testing. I can tell you that I have high expectations. My teachers have high expectations, and I can see it in our students that they do too. They want to do well, and I think with all this in place and you're all supported and helped, I think it's going to happen. That's what I think.
And Ms. Carter and I were talking the other day, and she was so complimentary of the high school faculty and staff and how they had just, that's one of the first things out of her mouth when she started talking about was the faculty and staff and what they were willing to do and willing to change, or whatever they needed to do. But you can see she's taken the bull by the horns and is really, obviously, she's been invested for a long time, but it's different in the principal role, it's to Ms. Carter. But she's absolutely dedicated to the school and has got a great team, and we're really excited about things. I appreciate you being here tonight and the high school faculty and staff too. Mr. Holmes is here with us as well. It's exciting to hear.
And let us know what we can do.
And I love that relationship part that you talked about with the teachers, Mrs. Carter.
I can't say how.
It's so key, and you're so right, the parent involvement. It's key at every level. It seems like the older the kids we get, sometimes parents are starting to kind of step back. And we need them sometimes more there than ever. Yeah. Appreciate that.
Okay, consent agenda items.
We have the consent agenda items, previous meeting minutes, payment of bill, school activity funds report, financial report, bill drifts, and the treasurer's monthly report that Mrs. Carnes will present right now.
The treasurer's report for the month of September 2021. Balance on half at the beginning of the month, $6,460,045.39. Total receipts for the month were $1,484,097.8. Total of receipts and beginning balance together, $7,944,142.47. Disbursements for the month were $4,609,074.31. And that brings the balance at the close of the month to $3,335,068.16. And fund balances for the general fund, Fund One, $4,952,154.17. Special projects, Fund Two, negative $1,221,878.30. District activity, Fund Twenty-One, $7,779.40. Capital outlay, Fund Three Ten, $140,952 even. FSPK building fund, Fund Three Twenty, zero dollars. Construction, Fund Three Sixty, negative $42,539.44. Debt service, Fund Four Hundred, negative $894,700.29. Food service, Fund Fifty-One, $390,172.92. And fiduciary fund, Fund Seven Thousand, $3,127.70. And that brings our total cash in bank for all the funds to $3,335,068.16. So we have a few negatives on here this time, so let me explain those to you real quickly. Special projects, Fund Two, that is basically due to the payment for our air purifier units, which was a little, if you remember, when you all authorized buying those, a little over $800,000. And we paid for those like the 28th or 29th of September, right there at the end of the month. So of course, the money for that's not going to come in in that month. Construction fund, you know, we're in the final stages on our project, and we're kind of at that stage, we have to spend it and ask for it in reimbursement, so.
Really, the only thing we've got left now in construction fund, or just the retainage of the contractors, is to that.
Yeah, so we're lining that up, and at this stage, we're at a point where we have to spend it and ask for it. So likely, we're going to see some of those negative this month, we got the money next month, kind of things, until we finish that out, which should not.
The only thing we're spending now on the construction is the grant funds. So the bonds that we expended that part, so like Ms. Carnes said, once we expend it, then we go into the portal and request it back.
Yes. And debt service, it runs negative like that every time this year, every fall it does that, until we get our first property tax payment, which we should get at the beginning of next month, what they've collected in the month of October. And then it generally stays positive for us through the rest of the school year. But that always happens in the fall. Because most of our bonds, we made two payments on each bond, one in the fall, kind of early in the year, and then one in the spring, kind of late in the year. And so we've made basically one payment on all of our existing bonds, and we don't have enough money to cover it until we get that property tax payment in next month. So that's a pretty commonplace thing. None of them are anything to be concerned about.
And we are also getting, Ms. Carnes was correct from wrong, I think it's $167,000 for food service.
I don't remember the exact amount.
Yeah, I think that's right.
It's a nice little extra allowance that we're receiving.
Part of the stimulus money, just because they know that food service has kind of struggled, you know, has been so different. So they were, we got that allocation the other day. It's $167,000, I think is what it is. Yeah. And really, no big paperwork, nothing. The only thing is that if you didn't want it, you had to tell them, but otherwise, they're going to send it to you. That's what Mr. Emerson said, who didn't want it. So we were very pleased with that, so how food service.
The paving really looks good.
Yes, the paving looks great. Piles, gaddies, branscooms, Salby's asphalt strapping. Everybody's really worked together well on that. The only part that we're still working on now is behind the high school, the drainage and getting that, all that taken care of.
Looks good.
It didn't look marvelous. We've got a lot of compliments on it, a needed project. We just really appreciate your all support with that. So Mr. McGowan and I were back behind the high school today, but they're back there now digging the trenches, putting the water lines in, the drainage lines and stuff like that. So it's still on track that we should get the rest of that paid around back and stuff before the close of the asphalt pans. If there are no changes or amendments. If there are no changes or amendments, I recommend approval of the consent agenda items.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda items.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Shortened school day and/or week.
Okay, we have some students here that local boards of education, as you all know, must approve requests for students to have a shortened school day and/or week. And of course, these are students that are in special education or maybe a 504 plan. The decision is determined by the needs of the student. The documentation, including the board's recommendation, is then submitted to the Kentucky Department of Education. Of course, the copies that you all have is redacted of student identifying information, but we have the following students, ID S22-01, S22-02, S22-03, S22-04, S22-05, and S22-06. So there's six students, and we'll have the necessary documentation is forwarded to the Kentucky Department of Education.
I'll second it.
Ms. Joy, second?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Speech and language pathologist contract.
Okay, our speech, our students receiving speech and language pathology services pretty high. And we also have one speech pathologist on maternity leave, but this will allow a fully licensed speech and language pathologist by this contract to come in and work with us. Y'all all know Ms. Karen Dyson and the job that she has done for us before, and has agreed to provide for us again. So this is a very similar contract to what you have seen before for her to come in and provide those services. So I recommend approval of the speech and language pathology contract that's been approved by the board attorney.
Well, she'd be doing all, all the schools or different things, just waiting for them to...
I know she's at Russell Springs right now. Actually, it's all we can talk to her today.
Yeah.
I, I couldn't take this case, Ms. Joy.
Yeah, okay. Just where she's sitting, I'm sure. I'll make a motion to approve this SLP contract. It's been approved by the board attorney.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Accept or reject bids, three surplus school buses.
Okay, if you all previously recall, when we accepted the Volkswagen settlement money, that we got 50% of three buses, but we had to take three of the older buses out of operation. And they could not be back in operation, or we would actually get more money. Because usually when we sell surplus buses, the companies out of Florida, you know, purchase them. But these have to be taken out of commission. Holland engine, bored through the engine, and the rails cut. So this is literally just for scrap metal, is the only thing. So we got two bids here, and you can see them listed. We previously declared the buses surplus property, and the sealed bids were open and tabulated by central office staff on September 29th at 1:00. So Burt Auto Parts, each up on $500, except for bus 2032, that's listed for $400. Michael Grimsley for all three buses, $1,000 each. So I recommend approval of the bids received from Michael Grimsley on buses 135, 2031, and 2032. And then here, of course, he'll work with Mr. Wolford on taking possession of them. But we, you know, that was a, we got three buses at half price, taking that Volkswagen settlement money. All about the emissions.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bids presented.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Out of state and/or overnight trips.
The following groups have received approval from superintendent for the following...
Skip one, skip one, 11A.
11A?
It's on there, 11A.
Yeah, I mean, not together or what?
Mine's 11A.
If you click refresh, does it?
Or is it after it's refreshed?
Number is it then?
Because mine's, mine's right, so yours has to be.
Mine says 11A, I don't know. Where's it supposed to be? It's not 11A.
What's refreshed?
Well, if you all don't care to go to the overnight trips, and then we'll circle again. Mr. Kazook, it's not refreshed either.
That's what I had since I was... We all had 11A.
It's on there, but it's not, it shouldn't be listed as 11A, it's on separate thing. If you all don't care just to go down to the overnight trip, then I'll do the next one.
We're gonna do that.
She says, uh, on those, it's on 14.
So this one will be the out-of-state and overnight trips. Following groups have received approval from superintendent for the following out-of-state and overnight trips. Russell County Middle School, November the 7th through the 9th of 2021. Russell County Middle School Y Club, or the Kentucky Youth Assembly at Louisville. And then they'll also be going to the Kentucky, the state capital in Frankfurt. And then Russell County High School, November the 18th through the 19th of 2021. FFA, Murray State University School of Agriculture. So I recommend approval of out-of-state and/or overnight trips. Middle School, the Y Club is something they've done for a number of years, the high school has as well. Two, two good, awesome trips that we're glad to see stuff like that back in operation.
I recommend we approve the state overnight, out-of-state and overnight trips.
Okay, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Fundraisers?
Yeah, fundraisers. I don't know if yours is still out of order or not.
Oh, yes.
Ooh, ain't that old.
What number is it supposed to be?
On the fundraisers, the following groups have pursued, pursued, in front of approval from the superintendent for the listed fundraisers. Jackson Elementary School has three dates listed here for the Scholastic Book Fair, November 19th through the 26th, January 28th through February 2nd, and May 16th to the 20th of 2022. And then Salem Elementary School PTO, October 18th through November the 1st, 2021. The Little Caesars frozen kits for the pizzas, breads, and cookies. And just a reminder, it is the school-wide fundraisers, you know, that have to be approved by the board. Otherwise, it may be just, like for example, FFA of the high school, it's just a single club is doing something, that Mrs. Carter approves that, and it doesn't require more approval. It's the school-wide fundraisers that come to the board. So I recommend approval of the school-wide fundraisers.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Now, this is the one that, I'm not sure what it's showing on your all's number, but the revision, Russell County Schools 2021 Safe Return of In-Person Instruction.
Continuity and Services Plan.
Not a mouthful, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, at the board meeting that we previously had, not the, I think it was the first one in September, because, well, you're all hard to, we've had a lot of board meetings. At that point, of course, the mask requirements were removed for, by the legislature, and it was up to each individual district. I told you at that point that we'd kind of develop some type of metric or something to go by. So this is what I am proposing. I'll just read the rationale in its entirety. The revisions to Russell County Schools 2122 Safe Return to In-Person Instruction, Continuity and Services Plan, the School Operations Plan, changes the mask requirement for Russell County Schools to the following. And then of course, you have the entire plan that's been attached to your board packet. The mask requirement would extend only when Russell County's in the red status at the high incident rate of COVID-19. Couple of disclaimers that I've got on here. Regardless of what we do, or you all do as a board, per the CDC order, masks are still required on the school buses, and per Kentucky Tech Directive at the Lakeview Regional College and Workforce Center, as of now, they still have to have masks regardless of any metric that a district or anything like that has. So the proposal that I have is all visitors, employees, and students are required to wear face coverings and masks while on school properties and facilities when Russell County's in the red status, which is the high incident rate of COVID-19. The determination will be made on Thursday of each week for the following week, based upon the COVID-19 incident rate found at KentuckyCOVID19.ky.gov. And, and we talked about this, and we picked a, a day, if you all agree with this, on Thursday, so that way we can get it out to the teachers, get it out to the families, announce that to everybody while we have them at school on Friday. But it says, you know, we're trending down low now, a lot of the counties around us are already orange. We're still red today, but maybe, you know, hopefully, things keep going on. But let's just say that by Thursday of this week, that we are in the orange, and that gives us Friday to communicate that. So whatever it is on Thursday of that week will be what we go for, for the following week. I just think it would be very tough on faculty, staff, parents, students, and everybody if it was trying to change something every single day. Are we red, are we yellow, whatever it is. So some districts, other districts have done this as well. Pick a day and kind of go with the, with the, with the color that would dictate for the following week. So masks would be encouraged, but optional when we're in any other, other color categories. The low incident rate, which is green, the moderate incident rate, which is yellow, or the substantial incident rate, which is, which is orange. And again, I can't emphasize this enough, per CDC order, they're still required on school buses. That would be on morning-afternoon routes, and that would also be on, you know, extracurricular trips, athletic trips, or anything like that. And then again, still required at Lakeview County Regional College and, and Workforce Center. We certainly see our, our numbers trending, trending down. Today's, actually, today's colors have several counties around us, Casey, Plasky, Wayne, McQuarrie, Laurel, Larue, they're all in the orange, and several others across the state as well. And I think we dropped about 20-something points from Friday on the incidence rate. So we're, we're certainly, let me tell you what we are right here. We're, we're down to 55.8 now on the, on the incidence rate. So that's what I'm proposing. We need something to, to guide, in my opinion, when the incident rate is still really high, we have a lot of spread, and this would put masks being required only at that red level, and then encouraged, but not required, on the orange, yellow, and green. And that's the only part that's really been changed on the operations plan. A few disclaimers, if we, if we do this, if you all approve this, that does change the quarantine. The quarantine guidance from the Kentucky Department of Public Health and Lakeview County District Health Department is if masks are being worn, then it extends to three feet. If they're not being worn, then it extends to six feet. But having said that, if we're in an orange, yellow, and green, you know, I want to think that we wouldn't have a lot of quarantine anyway, because there shouldn't be a lot of numbers. So it may be a wash. And as we've said this all the time, this plan is fluid, the state tells you your plan is fluid. We can revisit this at, at, at any time. I'll be happy to.
I think this is a good compromise, but I still don't feel like, I still have to vote against it, because I really feel like their masks are not, are not doing what they need to do. The kids are not the ones that are, are at risk with the masks. And, and you know, see, some of these kids are in the second and first grade. They have never even seen their teacher's faces. You know, with communication, you know, you need to see your whole face. You need to see their mouths, they need to see that. And I really feel like we need to put enough trust in our parents to know their own children, to know whether they need to have a mask or not.
Well, we, we said we'd look at this again after fall break, and that's what we're doing. And we still haven't got everybody vaccinated, or, or, you know, distancing, and different things that, that we need to do, but we're getting there. People are, people are observing it more, and as soon as we can get it down into a lower level of people that are positive, test positive, then win-win, you know? Take the mask off if you want to, or if you feel safe.
I don't know how people noticed that before I even did it, it wasn't going to be. But I made three or four calls and said they loved it, I'd be eleven weeks. But I didn't know how they noticed it.
I didn't see how the incident rate was at the time. I, I mean, my personal thought is that I, I think that as a whole, the state has definitely trended down. And it's just the numbers that we have, we have dropped significantly.
There's several, several counties have already dropped the mask mandate. And I guess the numbers are probably way, way down, but there's several that have already dropped it.
This is the same, I know Plasky is doing the same process, if you're in the red. Some of them have picked a higher incident rate of like 50, different things. And like you said, Ms. Joy, some of them have dropped it altogether, of course.
I think Green, and Larue, and, Green County and Larue County, and maybe Lexington, and, but, I don't know. There's several, several that have, but.
I'm glad we have a burn farmer. I'm glad we have a bird.
Have a what, a bird? Oh, a mask burning, yeah.
Is Russell County still in the red zone?
We, we are, but we dropped 20-something points from last time.
You're going right away. It says masks still required, is Lake County reasonable? Has it ever been not required, sir?
No, but that's because, because it's a state-run facility.
Okay, I was wondering why it's listed separate, so.
Yeah, because the state, I mean, we own the building, and we, you know, work hand in hand, but because it's actually a state-run facility, they get to dictate that.
I just wanted to clarify what the reason was.
And, and just for, you know, again, we have a lot of masks, and so if we, if you all approve this, and we go to the, you know, an orange, and masks aren't required, and they're still required on the buses, we will make certain that bus drivers have plenty of masks on the, on the buses, because they would, you know, they'd tell Johnny, hey, you know, you have to put this on while you're on the bus. And then he could throw it away, or she could throw it away. And Ford, Ford Motor Company.
Yeah.
They make masks.
What do they?
Donated a lot of nice masks, yeah, Ford Motor Company. And we have cases from them. So we will, we would make certain that, and same thing with Ms. Roy, if she did any mask for kids coming back and forth from there. But I would imagine if we were out of it, if we weren't requiring it, you know, the kid, kiddo could still have it in their pocket, put it on when they went to the Lakeview Regional College Workforce Center, and if they so choose, took it back off when they walked up to Ms. Carter's home. You know, that type of thing would happen.
So if it's, if it changes Thursday, then next week we don't worry about it.
That's right. The Thursday dictates it for the following week. Again, I just think it would be so difficult to, everybody would have to go to some point of information if it was on a day-by-day basis.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it would be kind of tough. And I shared this with the principals and asked them what they thought about it. They were all good with it. I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion that Russell County Schools revised Safe Return In-Person Construction Continuity and Services Plan, High School Operations, will be approved as presented at the factory meeting.
I'll second it. Somebody might have beat you there.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
Ms. Brenda?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
And I'll say again, like, you know, we can, we can revisit this anytime you all tell me to. I will tell you now that I probably will need a special board meeting here in a week or two regarding the freezer at Russell Springs, because the beds were...
We have wore that out, haven't we? We wore that freezer out.
We have wore that freezer out. But I told Mr. Emerson to begin with, it is a long process to do something like that with the state. So I probably will need that in a week or two.
So what number we are?
We're on that 14.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, got so messed up. The, the first reading on the Kentucky School Board Association policy would be the next one that we... This is just a first reading, and no actions required on that policy. is just a first reading, and no actions required on that policy. Um, so there's nothing, there's no action on that one. As regards the classified salaries and that one change for the return to work. You going personnel?
Yes.
We skipped around. Okay. Personnel reports. Jackie Matherly, Jameson Elementary School, hired Cook, cashier, cafeteria. Courtney Poston, resigned Salem Elementary School custodian. Steve Betts, resigned Russell County Middle School Assistant Boy Soccer Coach. Jacob Foster, Russell County Middle School, resigned social studies teacher. Uh, Mr. Jim Utter is the Russell County High School head custodian. Mr. Jason Pierce, hired Russell County High School custodian. Cassidy Bowden-Hipson, district-wide speech-language pathology assistant. Brianna Brown, district-wide substitute teacher. And Jenny Minix, district-wide substitute teacher. And also, before we get to the public comment, I also want to note that our district facility plan that has been turned into the state that includes such as, um, the middle school referencing, um, the TRAD, ATC, and just our whole plan, that rough draft that's at the state right now, they did ask me some questions about it during fall break. So they are reviewing it. It's been up there for, our last meeting was when? May? It's probably been submitted since May, and they are looking at it now.
They're still looking.
Well, they, they just started, Mr. Tarter. I knew it would be a long time. Um, it's just, it's a long process. So that, we should have that maybe in a month or two. Uh, once you all approve it, and then it goes to the state board to approve it. That's our funding, our plan for the next four years.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we got everything.
I think so. Just a public comment.
All right. Public comment? Anyone?
Yeah. Ryan Tolar. Uh, with all due respect, we love the state's map, um, for masks. We're looking at an average of four point two five cases on a seven-day average. Uh, that's, that's almost unattainable. At the rate for testing, we're doing test-of-state programs, we're driving through testing. I don't, I don't see that as achievable. As of Friday, we had sixty-nine cases. That's out of the population of seventeen thousand nine hundred twenty-three people. In 2019, we're not going off of how many people are actually in this county now. But that means that ninety-nine point sixty-two percent of this county is walking around. That's not an active COVID case.
Yeah.
So I think that we need to look at this and stop playing it in the games as far as, you know, what, what they're wanting us to do, or, or, I, I mean, I'm sure there was some type of funding in order to, uh, bask. I mean, I don't, I don't think that that was for nothing.
To mask, Mr. Tolar?
Yes, sir.
No, no.
IHB three, House 402 states, with, uh, masking of, of, uh, the children. The appropriation of ones would be allocated, so.
No, there's no separate line item if we vote or, or not, or no certain.
Okay, well, regardless, I mean, the, the numbers that, I mean, sixty-nine active cases, sounds like a lot, but in retrospect, if you look at them, that's, that's ninety-nine point sixty-two percent of the population is not an active COVID case. And in the school system, I think ten tested positively today, but forty-eight are quarantine.
No, that's not even tested positive today. That's positive total.
So we have ten positive, and fifty kids are quarantine exposed. So one-fifth is actually positive. Forty of them, forty-eight of them, they're, they're quarantined just because they were exposed to somebody who had tested positive.
That's correct.
So we're, we're quarantining almost five kinds of kids as are testing positive. So we're really not keeping kids, we're not helping anything by continuing this policy.
Well, we're, you're always gonna have more kids, uh, or, or anywhere, quarantined versus that are positive, just because one, one person's, you know, exposure-
But if they're in the test-of-state program, then they'll be tested, and they'll get to stay.
No, that's only parents want to do it, though.
Right, right.
Not every parent.
So, so more kids are opting out of the test-of-state program than are actually tested to stay.
Well, and, and this might not reference students that are exposed in school. So if a child is exposed to someone at, at home, then they, that's not allowed. The test-to-stay is only for school exposure.
We're recording that number.
Pardon me?
So then we're recording that number for the-
The number that we have of students, this is not just necessarily that they, that we think they caught it in school. This is just positive cases, period. It could have been nothing necessarily associated with school. It could be because mom has it, and, and then the child caught it from, from home. Yeah. It's not necessarily caught in school.
If we continue, like I said, if we continue to go off the state's map, I mean, we're looking at, and maybe, maybe summer we'll be able to forget about it, but until then, I mean, I don't think-
No, I, well, I mean, I respectfully disagree, because if all the other counties, such as Plaski County, Large County, and all these counties next to us can get into the orange, and is our number tracked down so much? I mean, we dropped twenty-something points from last weekend to, to today.
Okay. So, I mean, the Kentucky state map is twenty-five cases per one hundred thousand.
That, that's what triggers that red, yellow, orange.
Certain counties in the whole state that you have that much people in their, in their county.
Right. They just have to come up with a formula on how to do that. Yeah. But I'm, I'm-
That's four point two five cases on a seven-day average.
Right. But we have, you know, back in the summer, back at previous times, uh, back before, we were dealing with this in the previous school year. Uh, we kind of had a metric that we would go virtual if we were in the red, and we weren't always in the red, you know, uh, up, up then. And, and again, the way the cases are trending, um, you know, there's a lot more orange counties and yellow counties today than there was, you know, last week or the week before. So statewide, the numbers are going down, just like they are in Russell County.
On another note, um, if you go to your social media pages of your schools, both the high school and the middle school, you'll see that, uh, there's multiple kids that aren't wearing incorrectly, and it's, it's down below their base, and they're, you know, if somebody's telling them to pull it up, I'm sure they're pulling it up like this. They're not taking it off, getting it correct. And I've had kids that's been sent home due to this issue already. And, uh, I mean, excuse me if, um, out of line or whatever, but just judging off of social media, you can kind of tell that it looks like it's a little more relaxed, but then my kid's the one that's getting reprimanded for it. So, I mean, I definitely think that it's not a good policy, and it needs to be looked at, and it working too.
I'm not ready, I'm not ready to call her. It's like, um, like I said, I'm sending home. And I said, every one of you, except for Joy, and I'll say thank you for sticking up for this, but your emails keep getting me that way for some reason, and Mr. Ford is good too. But the rest of you, I sent you pictures that were posted on social media. I think, uh, Russell County Middle School had a pep rally outside. My team got called forty-seven times that day, pulled masks up our race. No, there are pictures of cheerleaders, football players, all team, a bench team, put them on the field together with no masks at all. And I don't understand, like, how, you don't think this is affecting our kids when he's getting told in the bleachers, you can't be grouped apart. And on the field, as long as you're a cheerleader, or a football player, or someone that plays a sport, it's okay. It's a photo op or two. And it's on the social media. So what I'm saying is, if we're gonna do this, let's do it right. Let's treat all the kids the same. It doesn't matter if they play sports. It doesn't matter if they're important in this county. You know, I, I don't, I know that you got them, you sent the emails. I've sent multiple emails. Sure you recognize my name. I'm just saying, if, if we're gonna do it, let's do it fair, not the way that we're doing it.
Mr. Tolar, are you?
I want to address the one question we talked about last month. Do you have anybody making a motion on that, to put that in our debate system?
Uh, Mr. Thomas has had two meetings with two different reps.
Okay, great. And another thing about the press, you can brief that in the box, guys. It doesn't go back to box. It doesn't stop boxes. You guys have done it right. As I said, I was at volleyball Saturday, making three people have masks on the whole, the whole gym. So the only thing I actually wear is respirators. My wife is a COVID person. The masks you guys wear, they don't work. We know this. So you know what you're doing is using our kids, but not letting them see the teachers' faces.
I agree with you one hundred percent. I see him alone now. The boy comes home, his ears all hurt, called the doctor, can't breathe. So we need to, let's do something different. Keep doing the same thing, or keep getting the same results. That's God's challenge. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I won't argue with Ryan and his numbers. They overwhelm me, and I'll accept them. My point is, and Mrs. Wilson and I agree, you know, you can't hear me as well now if I didn't have a mask on, you can't see my face, and whatever that was, and I agree. And kids don't like them. I don't like them. But to me, it's pound and tewity that, okay, we're getting better, now let's take the masks off. Because we got this into the, the up orange man. You know, years ago, we had laws passed to wear seatbelts. Well, the number of deaths is reduced when we start, stop wearing seatbelts now. That's my point. And I don't argue the fact that there are pain, and they don't do as well as they should unless we all had in ninety-five masks. But I still believe in what I've read, is they do have an effect. Probably not the effect we like, and maybe it's not worth wearing them for the effect it has. But I don't agree just because we went up using the red, orange, yellow. Okay, now we're in the orange, so let's take them off. I would rather see a little more change than changing them that way on a weekly basis.
And I will add that we took them off for a while. It ballooned. Let's get it, let's get rid of this, and then we can all breathe easy and take our masks off. And, and old people like me won't, maybe won't die, hopefully. You know, if one person, if one person, no matter what age, is, this helps, it's worth it. A life is a life.
Okay, but can I say this? Like, I mean, I'm sure that you don't have the voyage kids at home, so you don't understand the mental effects that this is leading to. My youngest son has speech. His IEP for speech was illegal by me contract between the school, myself, the principal of student council. He's not even getting speech because we're pulling speech teachers out to teach classes. And then he's struggling. He's fancy his teacher's face. The teacher can't see his face. When he mispronounces words, he doesn't, he's not watching her mouth move, so it's not beneficial for them. So he's not getting speech, hasn't got speech correctly for two years, and he's not being able to see his teacher move her mouth. So you can say that if we save one child, but what if we, what if we destroy five kids from making you do this? Like, you know, it aggravates me that I feel like you're listening to the parents that have kids that are going through this. You know, you can sit up there all day and make decisions for my kids, but you're not allowing me to. And I'm their parent.
Believe it or not, I was, I'm a parent also. My kids are grown, and I have great-grandchildren, and they dove through the same thing. They're not in this county, but they're, they're wearing masks. And we just do the best that we can for Russell County. And I wish it were the way you wanted it, and it may soon be. Anyone else want to? Brenda?
I might push with your-
Paul Fiver?
Aye.
Crazy lady.